I'm in the day.
Right, because the missus.
But, I mean, we're both, just, he was like really insane. He would try and meet with teachers and go himself or whatever, so.
Alright, I'm gonna go ahead and call this meeting to order.
He's on my, on my, um, thing.
Missy, can, um, missy, can you do, wait, should we approve Maya first?
Yeah.
Yeah, let's do that first.
Um, I'd like to make a motion for electronic participation by Ms. Guy. Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Those, okay.
Hi Maya, uh, hi Ms. Guy.
Good.
Um, okay, um, missy, can you call roll?
Yes, ma'am. Dr. Chase, here. Ms. Help, Ms. Guy?
Here.
Ms. Halsted, here. Ms. Healy, here. Ms. Randall, here. Ms. Sigmund, Dr. Klein. And Ms. and Dr. Warner, here.
And Ms. Beckman, here.
Madam Chair, you have a form?
Thank you. Motion to, uh, do we have a motion?
Madam Chairman, I make a motion that we amend the agenda to add a, a briefing by the superintendent on the impact of the state miscalculation on the current year's budget and the budget that we are considering for next year.
Second. Ms. Guy, Dr. Chase?
Yep.
Thank you.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. A toast. Okay. Um, motion to approve the agenda with the additional item, um, from Ms. Healy.
Motion to approve.
That's what we just, um, great.
Oh, oh, I thought we had to do one thing then the other, okay, good.
I didn't substitute.
Alright, so, let's go ahead and jump into our discussions. Dr. Taylor?
Thank you, Madam Chair, um, and, and I actually will be discussing revenue in general as part of this presentation and talk a little bit about both this current year as well as some of the most recent news that we received from the Department of Education, um, on Friday regarding revenue for this current year and next. To jump right in, um, we, we are going to answer several board member questions that were asked at the last.
Can we get those numbers, I, I just, I know there's some numbers floating around on, on the amounts, just so I can keep that in perspective when we're looking at these budgets.
Absolutely, there, it'll be in here.
But, I have to wait, can you?
Yes, you do.
Can we fast forward to those numbers? I just, for this year and next year, as it stands.
So, it actually might make sense to wait, actually, if that's alright with you, Madam Vice Chair. Um, and I'm not trying to dodge it, but, but, uh, there are a couple of things that do kind of dovetail together, um, and that are a part of, it's what's your pleasure?
Go ahead. Well, how, how long do I have to wait? I'm just, just curious, I mean.
Maybe just a few minutes.
Okay.
Yeah, um, it is at the end of the slide deck, but, uh, this is not a, this is not a long slide deck. Um, we do want to answer a lot of the board member questions that were asked at the, the last meeting, as well as some that we've entertained via email. Those answers will be embedded in this presentation and, uh, and answered through some of the information that we provide. Uh, the purpose of this, uh, work session is to take a deep dive into discretionary items and to start unpacking the five-year budget plan. Um, one of the biggest components of the discretionary expenditures were some of our top priorities that we didn't include in the superintendent's proposed budget, but that we want to bring to the board for discussion and for review. And then close out with a discussion about revenue, a revenue strategy, and some of the recent news that we've received and, uh, the troubling impact that that will have, not just in this proposed budget, um, and in future years, but also for this current fiscal year. So, with that, reviewing, uh, the school board's budget priorities and for our viewing audience at home as well, uh, that our focus, uh, was on attracting and retaining high-quality staff, improving performance, and providing adequate staffing for our classrooms, and creating that safe and welcoming environment aligned to our needs. So, we offer responsible solutions to these challenges, and, uh, I think what you will see is that our focus is that we do these things over time, not all in, uh, in one budget year, uh, that, uh, our, our main priorities are focused on, uh, restructuring compensation that the board began last year, how we might look at, uh, the staffing in our schools, and that, uh, we provide adequate space for learning and resources for that. So, to that end, uh, this was the image that we ended with last time and the image that we'll begin with today. Um, we have an awfully big apple, um, and we fully acknowledge and understand that we can't eat the apple all in one bite, that we have to take an iterative process, uh, to how we might solve some of our challenges. So, um, to set some of the context for some of our comp, uh, our compensation discussion, we have to look at inflation, whereas the, this was not, um, a, a dominant driver in a lot of, uh, conversations in the past several years. Um, it is a pretty influential, uh, force that we are having to deal with right now. It's influencing everything from construction and labor costs, uh, to, uh, our, our labor market just in general and in a very direct terms. So, not just, um, the things that we buy, but also, uh, the services and the people that we employ. Uh, so much so, federal government is taking this very seriously. Uh, their proposed increase for fiscal 24, uh, is an 8.7% increase across the board, uh, for federal government workers. Uh, Stafford County Government very clearly took this seriously, uh, when they proposed a 15% uh, increase to public safeties, uh, compensation in the middle of this fiscal year, uh, outside of its budget process. So, to that end, uh, to summarize and to illuminate what was at the end of your spreadsheet, um, was that service employees, uh, we are focusing on an average 7.7%, but the range of increases because of the restructure is pretty dramatic. Now, for us to land at a 7.7% average, uh, you could very quickly surmise, there's not a whole lot of people that are gonna receive a 40% uh, adjustment. Uh, but in full transparency, uh, we do have some folks that have joined the team, uh, and due to some of our compensation, uh, guidelines and internal controls, have been capped at certain pay raises, or certain pay ranges, that, uh, have prohibited them from really being recognized at their level of experience in service. And so, this would fix, uh, a lot of that, uh, for those handful of folks that are way outside the range. For our licensed staff, uh, this is a range of 5 to 11 and 1/2% with an average of 8.5%. Administrators is a flat 7%, and then hourly and stipend, uh, we adjusted 3%. We'll dig into some of that detail momentarily. Uh, very important to know who we are competing against. Our, our competition is Prince William County. Um, we are not losing teachers in droves south or staff members in droves south, we are losing them north. Specifically, we are losing them to one locality more dominantly than any other, and that is Prince William County.
Can you bring your back?
Um, so, it, it, it's an interesting dollar figure here when we look at the differences between, uh, Prince William County and, and Stafford County, and, and I just want this 42 million to, to ring in your head for when we get down to, um, revenue and talk about some of the ca- comparisons between us and Prince William County in terms of percentage of funding from, from county government, you'll see a, an alarming and striking, uh, comparison to this number. And so, let's talk about PEG. Um, one of the questions that came from the board was, can we add SPOTSE to this mix? And, um, taking a look at, at Spotsylvania's salary line, which is the yellow salary line, compared to our current blue salary line and our proposed red salary line, you can see that SPOTSE is experiencing everything that we had challenges with last year, a tremendous amount of salary compression in the middle of their salary scale. And so, that is one of the things that we work to correct, but another important thing that we should point out, that if we did nothing, the top quartile of the SPOTSE scale would exceed Stafford, so.
And this is the proposed, right? This is not what their current scale is?
That is their proposed scale.
Scale, okay, thank you.
Based on what we could surmise from their, uh, budget presentation.
Can you add their current for the next time we see this?
Sure.
I mean, 'cause then we really would know.
Yeah.
Apples to apples.
It's about an adjustment of 5% flat, so, um, it, it, it would track very similarly to their yellow line, but it would be a 5% differential down.
It would be lower, though.
Yeah, lower. Um, so, that, that, that's basically what we're working against, and where, where we see the biggest challenge is not just that we have a gap across the board with Prince William County, but that our gap is most significant in the, in the north half of our scale. Um, so, what does our phased-in approach and plan actually look like? So, what we have here is, uh, phase one of the plan is the blue line down there at the bottom, and you can see, um, the implementation of the blue line, which was successful, the red line, which we're proposing this year, followed by the dot, the dashed line the year after, the yellow line the year after that, and then we start to achieve some equilibrium that we're planning after a full five years of implementation. Um, we think that, that this is kind of the, the future of the scale in terms of keeping away from, uh, decompression and, uh, excuse me, keeping away from compression and, uh, fully decompressing the scale and, and giving, uh, folks some, some predictability and what to expect. Now, in times of fiscal retrenchment, where you find yourself a little bit tough, you can still keep this structure in place by not adding flat percentages, but by adjusting steps annually. So, you know, there, there is a solution moving forward that keeps the structure in place even when there are times of fiscal retrenchment, but you do have to be committed to a structure lest you fall into the same situation that SPOTSE is dealing with now, that we were once dealing with, and, uh, they will deal with continually, at least for another year based on their proposed budget. Similarly, we have a plan to adjust our service scale, uh, in five phases as well. This is an example of our 12-month clerical scale and how we might start to bend the slope of the 12-month clerical scale, and this is what.
The pairs are not included in this, correct?
Uh, they are, uh, service employees, and they would have, uh, an experience that would mimic this as well. There are some other things that we'll note that we want to do for pairs in addition to this, but, um, but, but this is just one example to, to put a chart that had all of our, um, service scale, that would be an entire presentation of about 70 different slides. So, uh, this is just an example of what, um, what our scales would look like on, on a chart. So, with that, that, that's a, a general look at compensation. Um, transitioning and switching gears a little bit, uh, one of the things that, uh, Ms. Healy had asked about was, tell us the cost of the things that you left off that were high priorities and the things that you should have added. And so, we're gonna unpack each of these very briefly. Um, differentiated compensation was our, our top priority that we didn't include in this budget proposal. Additional enhancements to the paraprofessional scale, uh, full implementation of the staffing standards, which were a handful of things that we pulled out out of phase one, uh, contributions to PEGO major maintenance, that's nothing new, uh, for this board, this was something that was hotly discussed last year, as well as, uh, contributions to, uh, school-based differentiated allocations. So.
Are we saving questions, or can I, are we asking as we go?
Um, we can, uh, that's up to you, Madam Chair.
Can we just go and then we can ask?
Yeah, absolutely.
Just making sure if I need to write them down, just ask.
Yep. Um, so, for differentiated compensation, one of the questions from the board was, you know, how many vacant positions are we dealing with in each of these categories? What are the number of FTEs that we anticipate for next year? And what is the total cost? And, you know, how has this, this come to, come to play? Um, there, this is definitely what the salary cost is, there's a, a little bit of an adjusted number here to include the benefits cost on top of that, uh, because we do have a VRS credible comp component, uh, tied to here. And a follow-up question that was also asked in conjunction with this was, what on earth are we doing without 15 math teachers, um, and vacant math positions? And, and can I tell you, it's an unfriendly answer. It's a combination of, uh, long-term substitutes and, uh, teachers within the building taking on additional sections, increased class sizes, and a whole host of, uh, other options that buildings have figured it out. Um, and that's not the situation that we would want our schools, uh, to be in, especially in these high-needs areas. So, with that, uh, paraprofessionals, um, we had, uh, originally started, um, with a plan to move paraprofessionals at a, at a base salary that was equivalent to 50% of the teacher's scale. I can tell you that the adjustments that we made, although significant, to the paraprofessional scale, do not bring them up to 50% of what the teacher's scale was as a, at, what it is as a base percentage. Um, to make that final adjustment would be an initiative that would cost an additional 1.5 million. I want to reiterate that, um, this is, that what we have planned right now for the service scale is still an improvement for paraprofessionals and a pretty substantial one, putting them on a step scale and placing them on the right steps on that scale, but we believe that this is an enhancement that a lot of localities that are around us are already doing and that we should do as well, and that, to be, uh, equitable, this would be the right approach to take. Phase one of our staffing standards, we were able to accommodate in the, in the, uh, proposed budget, um, all but just a, a few items that we wanted to, to point out. Uh, the first was middle school 504 coordinators, though we accommodated this in some other places. Uh, for middle school, one of the things that we were, we were intent on adding were, was the school improvement specialist position, which, uh, functions as a testing and remediation coordinator position at the middle school level, and in balancing administrative workloads and administrative support, uh, we felt that this was something that, that, that we could balance out with other responsibilities in other places, similarly, um, to meet the SOQs for assistant principals at the high school level. Um, we thought that we absolutely need, uh, the additional support of some administrative help, but we would be already adding assistant principals and administrative support at the high school level just to meet the standards of quality. So, this would be an area that we would, we would want to grow into. Um, in terms of counselor ratio, our present ratio right now is 325 to 1. Um, we were aiming to reduce that to 275 to 1, and then eventually to 250 to 1 was our ultimate end target, um, over a series of a, a couple of years, but, uh, um, to, to make sure that we could match this, we still wanted to do a reduction, but we, we could reduce to 300 to 1, and, uh, it would save about 3.5 FTEs. Um, all total, um, I'm trying to remember off the top of my head, sorry, pardon me. Um, all total, uh, that was, uh, 1.6 million in savings by removing those three employee categories. PEGO major maintenance, um, a big one for this, uh, board and for this community. Uh, this is a major symptom of bad financial planning, uh, when major maintenance is not part of your operating budget. A really bad habit that, uh, Stafford County has is that we debt-finance our major maintenance, uh, as a county. Um, that, that's not smart. You should be budgeting, uh, in the neighborhood of 2 and 1/2% of the value of your physical assets. The value of our physical assets is just short of a billion dollars. That's $780 million in insurance value for our assets. Um, that's a, a 3R value of 19 million per year that we should be budgeting for major maintenance. Surprise, surprise, when you look at your 3R list, that's about what the total is that we plan for 3R. Unfortunately, 2/3 of that, um, are, are not funded requests, uh, when they do go for funding. Um, we have about $50 million over the next five years in unfunded requests, and, uh, that, that makes up, uh, about 60% of, uh, the, the planned 3R, uh, projects that we have. Over the next 10 years, that number jumps pretty substantially, it's 131 million. Uh, the issues that this, uh, creates is that, of course, is deferred and delayed major maintenance, and, uh, we're not replacing things when their useful life goes to an end, we replace them when they break or there's a crisis. So, um, the last one in, in this pile of discretionary adds, uh, was our differentiated school site allocations. This is an area where we absolutely, uh, would benefit from some site-based decision-making, some boots-on-the-ground decision-making, and putting teachers and principals back in, in the decision-right seats for, um, supporting, uh, some of our at-risk students and students that do have some risk factors. Uh, what I'm talking about is, uh, is an additional of $25 per student with disabilities, uh, English language learners and economically disadvantaged students. A good example that, that, uh, that could be used for this is you may, um, have students that are struggling, uh, with reading, and you could purchase Level Text with, uh, with that money. You could, uh, purchase supplemental, um, educational supplies, and for English language learners, you could even, um, offset the expense of some translation services, all which would help tremendously, um, for, uh, our schools. On the family side of this, um, we definitely have some fees that we pass along to our families, and, um, we believe that our kids should be able to come to our school, um, and be able to access all levels of the content without having, uh, to pay ancillary fees. So, to that end, uh, to offer a true free and appropriate public education, uh, we'd like to offset some of those fees, uh, with, uh, with some additional school-based resources. And this would have a dramatic impact on our kids and our classrooms, um, and give teachers the, the, the adequate supplies that they need for classrooms. So, uh, in our five-year budget.
And what was the price tag on this one?
Uh, the, the price tag?
1.4. 1.4.
1.4 million. And, and that would be 1.4 million in this year, and then we jump ahead to next year. So, I've got another handout in front of you, and this is our five-year budget handout. I'm not gonna spend a, a tremendous amount of time on this, uh, but in this handout, you have a five-year budget plan, and you also have an updated, um, fiscal 24 spend plan in there, based on the information that we received from the Virginia Department of Education on Friday, which I'll talk about in just a moment. But this five-year plan is what we're gonna talk about next. In every year of the five-year plan, we're going to have to address growth. In every year of the five-year plan, we're gonna be talking about, uh, contracts, um, and those contracts are gonna change based on our growth because usage will go up. We also have to, um, talk about inflationary factors. I, I know that, that inflation is not a popular word, um, in, uh, our county government from a funding, uh, perspective, because it means more money, but, uh, the companies that we contract with to perform purchase services, um, they candidly don't care. They're going to raise the, their rates per the terms of their contract, whether we agree with that or not, and they're going to use an inflationary factor to base that, uh, increase on. Um, this is commonplace in the marketplace, and we need to acknowledge that. Every year in the five-year plan is going to address, uh, changes to compensation and benefits, following the plans that we have laid out this evening. Um, every, uh, year in the five-year plan is also going to address, uh, changes to our operational services and our utilities. It's going to address, uh, asset replacements, things like technology, textbooks, transportation, furniture, security, and consumables. All of those things have a useful life, and when that useful life is exhausted, we need to either replace or reevaluate. Uh, transportation in terms of fuel and maintenance will be a feature every year in the five-year plan. When we bring new schools online, their, their administrative and overhead costs will be a function that gets responded to in the five-year plan, and strategic initiatives that the board, uh, wants to bring to the forefront and make a focal point in our community will also be a part of the five-year plan. At the bottom of, uh, the five-year plan, you'll see, um, inside your document, uh, I've got a little bit of a summary here in terms of dollar figures, uh, and also where these things are, are spent, but I want to draw your attention to, uh, the, the last little bit where it talks about, um, a catch-up percentage or funding above inflation. And I think that this is a particularly important way of looking at our budget, because we do have some catch-up to do, but we recognize that we can't do this all at one time. So, we, we are proposing, uh, a plan for the board's consideration that does this in steps. And even though the dollar figure might, might look very large and intimidating, it is something that we need to think about, um, in terms of how we can do this in a manageable way and how we can do this in a measured way moving forward. So, the first of the five-year, uh, plan after this current fiscal year that the board is considering, which is fiscal 24, so this would be year two, is going to carry forward, uh, compensation phases, um, it's going to carry forward staffing phases. Uh, there are some looks at benefits, um, there are some looks at our academic programs and some of our goals and professional learning in some very specific and targeted areas. Um, the difference from fiscal 24 to fiscal 25 is just short of 5 and 1/2% funding above our rate of inflation, which is not unreasonable. Uh, you'll start to see that these numbers begin to cascade as well, um, because as we are able to catch up quicker, we're able to gain a little bit more ground in terms of our ability for sustainability. So, at just under 5% uh, above inflation, uh, we are gonna be carrying forward the, any initiatives that we were unable to accomplish in fiscal 25, continue with our phased compensation and, and standards approach, uh, begin the process of hiring for high school six, elementary 18, and elementary 19, uh, and then begin, uh, to look at our total benefits package and other ways that we can enhance, um, our benefits offerings, uh, and looking at specifically career and technical education and service learning opportunities. The following year, um, at just over, uh, 4 and 3/4% above inflation, uh, fulfilling any unfulfilled, uh, targets or initiatives, completing our licensed scale compensation approach, nearing completion of our, uh, compensation, uh, scale in other areas, finishing out our staffing standards, and then fully, uh, preparing for the open of our new schools to come online, and then focusing on, uh, specifically some middle school enhancements that we can do, um, to our academic program, and then, uh, also explore year-round schools as a potential solution to some of our elementary challenges. Um, in fiscal, uh, 28, which is the last year in our five-year plan, uh, this is, uh, very much a catch-up year and an opportunity for us to close out, um, any staffing or scale adjustments that we might do. Our schools will have been fully operational for one year, our new schools, high school six, 18, and 19. Uh, we would be looking at changes to our, uh, benefits portfolio, and that we have some suggestions, uh, for the board's consideration to dig in over, um, the next several work sessions, and, uh, to align our, uh, our academic, uh, goals to some social development objectives that I know that the board is passionate about. So, there's a lot to take in with that, and this was an, an entree into a much, much deeper conversation, but this is a very aggressive plan, it's a very robust plan, but it also puts us further ahead, and as you can see, in year five, we're down to just 1.8% above inflation in terms of our funding request. So, we, we're, we're going for a very measured approach, but also a very aggressive approach at how we might solve some of our challenges, which brings us to the topic of today, revenue. Um, we showed you this slide the last time that we met, um, and thought that that might be the end of our revenue conversation. Well, not so lucky. On Friday, uh, we were notified of, uh, the, by the Virginia Department of Education that a correction in their calculation for state revenue, um, was to take place and that, uh, they needed to update their calculations for, uh, uh, local education agencies such as Stafford Schools and other localities, and that this, uh, correction was not just for next fiscal year, but also for this fiscal year. And so, um, just using some back-of-the-envelope math, because, and I'll point out why this is really important, the very last line on this slide is that the Calc tool has not been provided by the Virginia Department of Education at this time.
So, they are reducing this year's budget as well as next year's?
Correct.
So, that, you didn't realize that?
Yeah.
No, I saw that, I just thought that was next year. I just assumed it was next year's, 'cause I was seeing the email.
Yeah, so, so the.
It was in the Freelance Star article.
So, as seen in the Freelance Star, and, and we definitely want to give them a little bit of credit for being on top of this very important issue, 'cause it is so dramatic, it is gonna impact every single school division in the Commonwealth to the tune of $200 million. It's very significant. Um, our proposed budget, and again, this is back-of-the-envelope math, there's likely going to be some changes to this once we do finally get. once we do finally get the VDOE Calc tool, is to the tune of $3.7 million change in state basic aid. Now, for this current fiscal year, and I'm not trying to raise any alarm flags quite yet, we still need to unpack this a little bit further. And again, I would feel a lot more confident with the VDOE Calc tool and updated information before presenting much more than this to the board. We're between 1.1 and $2.6 million of an immediate impact to this fiscal year. Now, of course, this is 3/4 of the way through this fiscal year, and that's very problematic for us since we finished with less than 1%.
1.1 to 2.6, I'm sorry.
Yes, 1.1 to 2.6.
That's a-
That's a pretty wide range.
It's a pretty wide range, and it's pretty short notice.
And something that all of us struggled with at the end of last fiscal year is how alarmingly close we came to not having any kind of contingency whatsoever left over. And so we knew that this was going to be a lean budget year going in and that we would also be tight with contingency. So this is going to call for us to make some changes mid-year to finish out in the black. As every single person at this table knows-
I want to go to jail.
I told them.
It is a misdemeanor if we overspend our budget.
You've got a clean record.
We're past mid-year.
We are past mid-year. That is correct. And so for the Commonwealth to kind of pull a fast one right now is not just alarming, it's a little unconscionable because of how late this discovery occurred and how little accountability on the state has assumed in trying to solve this.
Especially since they were talking about the surplus funds they had coming in to office.
It certainly explains the surplus funds to a certain degree, which is very frustrating as well. So we will bring forward two things to the board, and you were expecting one of them. The first thing that you were expecting at your February meeting in the regular business session was your mid-year financial review. Absolutely, that was on the books. That's something that you were planning on receiving. Obviously, it's got a whole new dimension added to it now. The second thing that we'll bring to you in conjunction with that mid-year review of our finances is our preliminary thoughts on how we might make adjustments and recommendations for the board to consider.
That's on 214?
That would be on 214, and that'll be a part of your regular business session.
Yes, if you have the Calc tool, maybe they're going to keep it as far as-
It would be nice if we got the Calc tool before then. We think that we will. We have a call with the Virginia Department of Education tomorrow. All superintendents will be on that call to hear what their proposed solutions might be and hopefully also apologies that go along with that. We're actually sternly advocating for a legislative solution that involves a whole harmless provision because this is clearly an adverse circumstance for every school system, not just an isolated few. And we know that we'll workshop our proposed recommendations with the FABC as well before it comes to the full board on February 14th. So this is pretty much the worst news that you could expect at this time of year for any fiscal year. I will add that at first blush, hearing about this news and the interpretation that this was about next fiscal year was bad enough, knowing that almost every single superintendent has proposed their budgets to their school board, and this is late news for even next fiscal year, let alone for the current fiscal year. So this is as awful as it can possibly get.
You've had experiences like this, right? Like where there's suddenly-
I remember, what was it, the year that they decided that we had to pay more into BRS? Or there was some bizarre thing like that? I think the first year of the Senate Board, there was not expected we had to pay more into- anyway, I digress.
Can't talk about Stafford without talking about growth. Our problems aren't going away. This is a pretty rigorous proposal for the board's consideration because our challenges are pretty rigorous. We are one of the poorest-resourced school systems in the Commonwealth at 112 out of 133. That number has not really changed all that much in recent years. This is based on the most recent reported data, which is fiscal '21. In our peer group, we're undeniably the lowest. No surprise there either. The modification that has come with the news from the Virginia Department of Education does change our funding mix a little bit. We were proposing an increase from 37.5% of our budget being funded by county resources to 38.66. Obviously, that changes quite a bit, given the news from the Department of Education. Thank you, Richmond. We would be requesting 39.56% to come from county resources. As we know, county resources as a portion of the county's budget has changed dramatically over the past decade and has dropped off sharply. By comparison to Prince William, you can see where the difference is. And this was the stark comparison that I wanted you to keep in the back of your mind. That $42 million difference between Prince William and Stafford, well, here it is. The percent of our budget from county funds presently is 37.5%. The difference is pretty staggering. It's a 5% difference coming from Prince William County, but that 5% is pretty significant. The percent of the county budget that goes to schools, and this includes debt service. So I want everyone to understand, this is an apples-to-apples comparison here, is a 10% difference. It's a 10% difference. And part of this is because they have a revenue-sharing agreement. And so as a part of that revenue-sharing agreement, if we had a similar agreement at a similar percentage, the difference would be $39 million. So by contrast, if we look at the difference in their per pupil expenditure, $42 million in ours, $39 million gets you pretty close.
I think it's important also in this particular thing to make the point that this has nothing to do with cost to compete.
No.
Right? I mean, this is, they are, their locality is giving them more money. It is not just cost to compete, which is what the supervisors often claim. Oh, it's all cost to compete. No, it's how much local funding there is.
So it's funny you bring that up. Let's talk about cost to compete. So if we were to add cost to compete to the equation, that would add an additional approximately $15 million in state revenue, which would put us right in lockstep with Prince William in terms of their per pupil expenditure and where we land. My compliments to the board of supervisors for getting on the same page with our school board and making this their number-one shared legislative priority. But this is absolutely the case, and I'll draw your attention to the asterisk where this would not impact revenue-sharing agreement or local revenues. This is all about state revenues. So this $39 million that if we had a revenue-sharing agreement that was similar to Prince William County in our current tax structure would net us an additional $39 million. That would be in addition to a $15 million bump from cost of compete adjustments. So pretty substantial changes. But we're not going to bring you a problem without bringing you a proposed solution. So our current revenue strategy is pretty simple, and I apologize for the formatting issue right there. But our current strategy is patch, delay, react, and always kind of coming up short. And a good example of this is that we debt finance for maintenance. That's a terrible approach. Right now, you don't have an alternative unless you changed your projected revenue mix for operating. But this is the Stafford way, and it's not just our school system, but it's the box that we've been put in to respond. The other current strategy that we're operating under right now is, oh, next year. We'll get to it next year, or we'll deal with it next year. Well, next year after three or four years isn't next year because the first person who made the request is gone, and we're now on to their replacement five years later, and the problem still hasn't gone away. Kind of one of the bigger issues that you've dealt with on the capital side is being penny-wise and dollar-foolish. To save a nickel, it has cost us tens of dollars. And a good example of this is delayed construction on school buildings has left us space-constrained and has added the operational cost of modular classrooms. But worse, it's added to the cost of higher interest rates, higher labor costs, and higher construction costs, which really, really should have been addressed much, much sooner as part, and I refer everyone back to strategy number one. So our revised strategy and our proposed strategy is to budget for our needs, not our wants, to actually fund those needs and be pretty deliberate about our approach to doing that. A really important strategy, and I hope that people recognize this, is to revisit initiatives from time to time to review their return on investment. And did we actually accomplish what we said we were going to accomplish when we purchased something or we went down a road? Are we actually doing the due diligence to revisit our base budget and to do program evaluation in a meaningful way? I think this is a really important part of the budgeting process. It's good fiscal stewardship, and it's also in the best interests of our children that we serve and their families to make sure that we are doing adequate and due diligence on program evaluation to make sure we aren't getting our intended outcomes. And then the last piece of this is devising a revenue strategy with the county that helps us not only catch up, but eventually track with growth. Adjusting the real estate tax rate as a major portion of our funding year after year, probably not the best strategy because it doesn't lead to predictable or sustainable outcomes over time. We are looking forward to working with county government to come up with an approach that is a little bit more predictable, a little bit more sustainable, and does help us keep pace with growth. I don't think that anyone wants to have an adjustable rate of any kind in any kind of aspect of their lives. So having some kind of revenue stream that we know that we can count on and candidly to ride the waves of good times and bad times, that's a part of it, I think would serve this county a lot better. The last piece, and this is the fun part, is pursuing other revenue streams that might help us with some of our bigger needs, whether that be pursuing a different approach to sales tax, a different approach to how we might capture revenue from other sources. I think that there's a lot of untapped opportunities there, and certainly we're willing to explore that with county government in your direction as a board. So with that, we revisit our priorities and our solutions and draw everyone's attention to the fact that we not only get to talk about one budget at budget town halls, but lots of different budgets, and we've got lots of handouts to share with the community. We have a budget website that's linked directly to our website at StaffordSchools.net. All of the board's attachments have been linked to our website as well as board docs. We encourage our community to engage with us and ask a lot of questions. On the horizon for you, we have a ton of fun things to talk about as we unpack nondiscretionary needs, our federal and other funds. On the 14th during your work session, you have another potential work session on your calendar to give some direction and some decision-making. And then ultimately, a budget hearing also on the 14th during your regular business meeting, as well as that mid-year update that we talked about on revenue. And then ultimately, a called special meeting either on the 21st or the 28th, at your pleasure, on what approved budget you want to forward to supervisors.
I'm guessing with the changes in revenue from the state, we're probably going to need to be on the 21st.
That's what it sounds like.
We should have our budget book updated electronically this Friday. That was another big initiative that we got accomplished last year is that we moved our budget book to an electronic format, which we can obviously print for anybody who needs that and wants that tactile experience. But this is something that we often had to wait months to produce and to format properly. But now, this is something that we can just update online and people can have access to it in real time before the board makes a decision. And we can make changes that the board wants to make to its budget in real time and not have to wait for a printed document. So lots of exciting things to review. In your packets and some of the documents that you have, you have obviously the presentation that we just went through this evening, the five-year budget plan, all of the documents that you had last time, as well as our proposed service scales in five-year planned out, every nickel and every position aligned. This will be of particular interest to our service employees that we put this online because I know that folks have been asking for that. We're really excited to share that. And at this time, I'll come up for air, and we'll entertain any questions that the board may have.
Okay, so I think what the easiest thing for us to do is just kind of go around the room, and if you can drop two or three questions, and then we'll go on to the next and might get some of your other ones answered. And we'll give a second, a third round if we need to. So Alyssa, would you feel comfortable going first?
I feel like my first question is, huh? No, I'm just kidding. Just kidding. All right, so I mean, I think my priority concerns as we're looking at this is really going to be like, where are we getting the money from to cover this? Like, that's really freaking me out a little bit, just even looking at what we've proposed to do. I'm spending so much time working through it. So for my, I guess my question really lies in, other than having to cut things, what are recommendations for ways to approach it in the thinking process? Like, are we, do we need to-
Are you talking '23 or '24?
'23, this year, the way it impacts this year's funding budget. I mean, is this something that we need to, you know, we go to the public and say, get on Rich- I don't know, like, that's what I'm asking. I don't know how to approach even looking at it. So I'm just curious what your thoughts are.
So we always set up a reserve, though. There's always like extra money in the budget. So really, it's going to depend on how much in that scale between 1.1 and 2.6 we are, right?
Maybe the 3R projects just don't get funded this year, which is kicking the can down the road.
Well, right, but that's why I'm asking. I mean, it's such an impact and such a wall to hit this year after we were catching some strides.
So the good news and the bad news all at once is that we don't have a whole lot of time, but it's too soon to kind of make that call.
Okay.
It may, our recommendations may depend on what the actual dollar figure ends up landing on being.
Okay.
Whether we have to do this in pieces and chapters or whether we can do this with one fell swoop. And candidly, we also need to assess how viable some of the recommendations might be. Our focus was obviously not on things that we would adjust in the '23 budget. Our focus was on things on how we would bring forward a proposal for your consideration of the '24 and beyond budget. So I think that Richmond is exploring their options at the same time.
Okay.
So I think that we have a little bit of time, but we will need to come to some conclusion on this issue, whether favorably or unfavorably by the time the board meets on the 14th.
So this would really technically hit Richmond just as hard as it hits us in terms of them having to do some damage control perception-wise. And we all talk about how we're going to boost education, and then we're slicing money. So is that a fair assessment of that as well?
My assessment, and this is Thomas's opinion only, is that no, this absolutely hurts the students, teachers, and staff of school divisions throughout the Commonwealth and does not hurt Richmond because I don't think that a reputation ding is nearly as bad as the actual ding that this will happen to the classroom. So there's no way for this not to be felt if it is going to be in the full magnitude that it is. The question is, is how much of a magnitude are we really working with? And I wish I had a clear answer for you, but the tool that we would have to give you a clear answer isn't available.
That's crazy. I just, you know, in terms of incentive for them to really work, if it impacted them, like, I mean, it would be okay. And then my last one, just in terms of it. The federal funding number that you showed, the increase in percentage, that was how much they increased salaries for their people because of inflation? because of inflation. They're not proposing any increases to what they're offering us then based on that inflation rate either.
They are not. That is just for federal service employees.
Okay, I was just curious. I didn't know, I wasn't understanding where the crossover was and I'll just wait and see if my other ones are answered.
Okay, Alyssa?
It's great questions.
Do we have a number directly of what the salary lapse was and how much that maybe will be applied to any deficit in this budget this year? And going forward, are we going to, oh, we're just going to ask a couple of questions and get them all, get them out of the way. Are we going to adjust the amount that we keep in reserve to try to accommodate for some of these changes going forward?
Those are great questions. So I'm going to talk about salary lapse first and Mr. Formers is going to go into a lot more detail with salary lapse on 214. So some conventional wisdom with salary lapse, and this was a great tool that we had for a number of years because as more experienced and more expensive workforce would leave the profession or leave Stafford County, we would replace them with a less experienced workforce at a much reduced dollar figure. The problem with that in a national teacher shortage is we're not replacing them with less experienced workforce. As a matter of fact, we're replacing them with people from Spotsylvania County who are actually, in many cases, more experienced, which has dramatically eaten into our salary lapse. And we chose last year to make some tweaks to salary lapse to reduce a little bit because we were carrying a pretty significant load. And this year, we're actually making a recommendation that we go back and increase it for just that reason.
But there are positions like psychologists and counselors that are relatively, but there are expensive positions that we've been unable to fill too.
So not every position that goes unfilled is unserviced. And so for an example, a psychologist is a great example, we may actually spend more money fulfilling the psychologist role by, through a purchase services or contracted service than we would have spent on the actual psychologist. And granted, if we have teachers that cover sections in a math class or we have a long-term sub, that may be a reduced dollar figure to what the salary cost might have been for that individual, but it's not zero.
Yeah, but we haven't contracted 13 psychologists.
That's correct.
I mean, let's, let's.
Yeah, but I'm just saying, the cushion that we have enjoyed in the past with salary lapse is not there.
Is not, I got you.
So, and we've used some of the salary lapse to do a couple of things as we've talked about. One was looking at someone to work in facilities for land and project management. I mean, there have been some things that we have done, but looking at it going ahead, it's in our best interest absolutely to have a broader cushion as long as there is this national teacher shortage in play.
And people in Richmond don't know how to tell us the right number.
That is a problematic part of this equation.
I'm just, I'm just, we're going to give you some money, but we're not going to tell you how much it is.
That's right.
Was the article in the newspaper correct that they didn't include a certain tax that started this year? So somebody missed it.
Seems to be, yes.
Somebody missed it.
That appears to be accurate.
Sounds like a pretty.
Significant.
It's a significant.
Well, but I mean, it's an isolated thing though. I mean, it wasn't just miscalculating, they just didn't factor it in. I mean, it's egregious.
They re-done it.
I think it should come out of there.
Right, right. And we messed up on the PSATs too. I'm like, if you're going to throw stones at people about mistakes, I'd say this is a much bigger mistake than that was.
Yep. Alyssa, was there anything else?
So we're going to increase the, we're going to increase the amount, or actually change the way we look at salary lapse and are we going to adjust the amount that we keep in reserve?
Yes, and so both are reflected in the proposal that we brought forward for fiscal 24. It is absolutely something that we should consider and I will say that the board, as you deliberate, this is a difficult, difficult thing to weigh because you look at a dollar figure and you may say, oh, that's a million dollars in, you know, salary lapse or, oh, that's a million dollars in reserve. That could be X number of teachers, but the consequences of, you know, dealing with crisis and going effectively defunct, you know, do outweigh. And so we should have some financial controls in place and it's where the board's comfort is with those financial controls because stuff like this does happen.
And the V S B A budget session that they give, they always say you're shooting for one three percent of your budget.
That is correct.
I mean.
Right.
So that would be, that would be substantial. That would be nearly $10 million that we would have.
If it was 3%.
Yes, setting aside.
To handle something like this, right? That you're looking for three and a half to 10 million at the, as you go through the year that potentially handles stuff like this.
And to your point, as the 112th best resourced school system in Virginia, that's a luxury we may afford.
Right, yeah.
Dr. Chase?
Yep, so I just wanted just to sort of mention to folks, you know, I work in Maryland and the state of Maryland gave everybody, every state employee a 3% raise in October to deal with inflation. So just want to throw that out there for our, that things are done differently in other places. Okay, I'm curious about what our current FTEs are in those critical areas. So I'm trying to figure out how many more we're adding to where we have a deficit. And if you don't have it right now, that's fine, we can get it to me later.
It's not dissimilar because we are, we are, we are, these areas were not, are programmatic to a large degree and not more than plus or minus one in any particular area or two or three than. So for example, we may have had, you know, 182 math teachers this year versus 185. It's not, it's not a substantial swing one way or another. We have three high-impact STEM teachers. Next year, we will have three high-impact STEM teachers. So, you know, programmatically, it's not a, it's not a significant swing. Certainly psychologists and social workers, it's not, it's not a swing at all. It's just that that's where we are. So there are some areas that are more significantly impacted than others, but these are, these are just our traditional, these problems haven't, they've been longstanding and haven't gone away.
So with the change to special ed delivery, we aren't expecting there to be much of an increase from the current year?
No, no, actually in a couple of areas, maybe even a slight decrease, but what you'll start to see is an increase in level two and a reduction in level one. So you'll start to see a little bit of that swing, but it's not dramatically different than what you have represented there for next year.
And the other thing, just looking at the proposed change to the salary scale and the comparison with Prince William, I, this board was trying to, had had an initiative to try to cap the number, the cap steps at about 30 years. And I see that Prince William is capped at 30 years, but I see your five-year proposal doesn't have that happening, so.
So, I was just saying, we cap at 35.
Right, but we were trying to get down to 30. That was sort of the plan that we had a couple of years ago.
Yeah, they, we actually were going back as former superintendents.
Yeah, when we were adjusting for years, you know, we were, it's a different approach. So we were adjusting maybe more at the entry level of the scale, at the same time trying to reduce the top level of the scale. So since we started this new phase last year, our goal has been, hey, let's get to 35 and we'll stop at 35. But we can certainly.
It just seems kind of weird that we're competing with Prince William that stops at 30, but we're going to keep going up to 35. That just seems kind of odd to me.
And honestly, it's something that doesn't have a major impact until we really get to years four and five of the implementation. So it could be something we could adjust if that was the will, but, because right now, the folks at the top of our scale are typically the ones in that, so in the midpoint of the scale, you're going to see they're really at that 11 and a half percent up. And as you get back to the top, when they're already maxed out above that, the top, then they're getting the 5%, maybe it's six or seven on average.
It just seems to me if we're playing around with this at this time, I mean, it seems like we should be figuring that out at the same time so that in five years, we are at 30 steps and Prince William is at 30 steps and our scale is where we have it.
This is a super easy adjustment if, you know, if this is the, if the rest of the board's will, I mean, that's a, that's a, that's a very easy adjustment for us to make.
I thought we had dropped some of those steps, Mr. Formers.
We had 39 when we started the process.
So we were in a process of reducing them.
What we were going down to 30.
Right.
And you stopped at 35?
So we stopped, when did we stop?
Two or three years, yes. Yeah, so we started at 39 and it was really like going up to 40 and I think we went to 37 and 36 and so we were right about where we were at the time, which is 35.
So was that stoppage something the board acted on? Because I don't recall it coming to the board for action.
Just part of the budget presentations that, as we presented the scale each year.
I think last year, what I recall was just there was concern that continuing to do that was causing more compression in the scale or was messing things up.
It was.
But I'm just saying, I'm just trying to think moving forward, what's, what's the goal there? And I mean, there's.
Very easy fix. Honestly, we just need that direction, that the goal is to work towards a 30-step scale. And by the time that you've concluded your five phases, you absolutely could have that. And we could, we could create that in a meaningful way.
Is there a disadvantage to that?
If you're on 30.
Yeah, if you're, if above, above your 30 years of experience, you, you're capping employees. So right now, the distance is so dramatic that you probably would not want to do that until you got closer to the end of your phased-in approach. So if you were going to do that, which is a reasonable request and makes a lot of sense, I'd advise that the board consider doing it in year four or five of your phased-in approach so that you didn't adversely impact your most experienced teammates. But it makes sense, I mean, it.
And because it was, at the time, we weren't doing a full-scale implementation. So we were just trying to shrink the top of the scale. So it was expensive in that manner, but we were actually trying to get to 33 because it cut down on what those costs were. And 33 made a little bit of sense because it's 30 plus the plop, your three years of the plop, it's a VRS Plan One benefit. So we're trying to get to 33, but 30, 33, 35 all make sense.
I think I remember the 33-year discussion because it's an odd number.
I mean, it does make sense. I mean, it's a, it's a good strategy and it's a good, good way of thinking about it and some logical breakpoints for when service would end for some of, some of our teammates or what aspirationally we would hope that service would end for them.
Okay, Maya? Ms. Guy?
Hi, thank you. Yes, I'm actually shocked because I don't have any questions. Two of them were already answered, but as soon as I stop talking, I'll pick up another one. Maybe you can come ask me at the end.
All right, just message me if you need me to call on you again.
Okay, this is a lot to digest. Just seeing this now, I'm really not even comfortable I'm going to be able to digest all of this in the month that we have.
Weeks.
Yeah.
You know, from now until the end of February. So hopefully.
There's so many unknowns here too.
I mean, hopefully we'll be ready to do the five-year plan. My focus right now though is going to be on next year because, you know, looking at it in context, but just generally, because this is a lot. It's good and I can see why you all have worked in nights and weekends and, you know, all hours to put this together, but there's so many lines here that I, that I want to look at. I'm going to have some, some very procedural questions, so they're not substantive, but there was a slide, it's service employee positions, you know, some are going up to 40%. Is that information available as to what positions they are and what percentages? Because that was a huge range. And this is not something, it's just a general question that I think, you know, may raise some questions for people, you know? How many of the positions are proposed at closer to 40% versus what the other side was like 7% or something?
So actually, let me illuminate that and I'm glad you brought that up. There's, there's two points and Mrs. Healy is absolutely correct. The five-year budget does not require adoption from the board, but this is something that the board and the board supervisors have discussed. The only budget that the board should spend an awful lot of time with is its current budget year, but it is helpful to know where you're going. And so that's why we've mapped out the five-year plan as a roadmap. Absolutely, things will change. You'll notice in the five-year budget that there is no revenue projected because it's such a variable. So we didn't include revenue in the five-year budget. We only focused on expenditures and needs just for the point that, that Ms. Healy is trying to bring to light.
And I think, just to piggyback on that, I think the supervisors are constantly just like, wait, we gave you all this money last year, now you're asking us for more money. And I think there is something to seeing, yeah, and we're going to have to keep asking you for more money for five years in order to fix this problem. And they may or may, how they react, I don't know, but I think it is, I think it is valuable to put that on the table.
And I'm in favor of having this here. I'm just saying that I don't know that I'm going to be in a position to really come to a conclusion on these five years in this limited month that we have. That's all, it's just an observation.
We vote on a budget annually. We don't vote on a five-year budget.
That's right. This is just a guide.
But, but I think, I think to that extent, if we're not comfortable with the five-year, with whatever changes we may want to see in it, I think we should continue it after March 1st to get through because it is a really good, a good goal.
Well, I think this lays out a very important board supervisors more than anything and says, look, this is, you know, this is accommodating growth in our infrastructure and all those things.
But again, this is a superintendent's proposal, so if, if I'm going to be selling something, I want to make sure it's ours, you know, or we've had our, you know, implemented on it. So anyway, so are these positions, it's like?
Back, back to our service employee staff. So it's not any one position as much as it might be individual employees and really just a handful. And I want to point out that the goal here is about structural changes, not, not necessarily about percentages. And anyone with a calculator could figure out that there would be a lot fewer 40% adjustments. I think there might actually be just one.
7.7, yeah.
Yeah, there might be literally just one, but in full disclosure and transparency, even if there's one within the range and we have to report it, it's, it's a lot closer to the 7.7% in that we're making adjustments. So what caused the 40%?
So maybe you need the median.
Or can we just see the, you know, tell us the positions? What is the range? How many at five? How many at seven? How many at 10?
Sure, we can do a distribution for you.
I just, I think that's going to be a, again, this is, this is not a substantive question. It's more procedural.
That's right.
But I think it's one that will raise some eyebrows on there. So if we could just get the numbers, the license, that's a, that's a fairly reasonable range, five to 11, you know, that's, you know, some are higher, some are lower. But when you see 40, that's sort of, you know, I.
So let me explain it a little bit and I think that this is worth hearing, especially for the people who might be watching. We had a practice where we capped new entrants at the midpoint of our presumed range regardless of their experience, if it was north of that midpoint. So the highest you could go was the midpoint if you were coming into a position with experience. We have changed that practice and now we are giving credible service credit for that, that experience that you brought in and placing you on the appropriate spot on this scale based on your experience. So for a few people, that will be a significant jump because you're coming off of the midpoint. For the majority of people, you're just placed on the right spot that you should be on and you're going to realize no less than a 5% adjustment, but an average of a 7.7% adjustment.
Can we just get those, get those numbers up?
Yep.
That would be helpful. Was there a slide that said that the, the percentage where else in the county was 37.5 and it's going up to 39. something?
Presently, we.
Was that, was that on one of these?
Yes, our current budget.
Went so fast, I couldn't write down the digit after 39.
Our current budget, actually, I think I went too fast. Our current budget has us financed at, no, maybe I didn't.
When you say current, you mean this year's budget?
It's current.
Page 17 in the slides.
There you go, here you go. Our current budget, we are currently financed 60% from state sources. and currently we are financing, this is fiscal twenty-three. Of course, that too may also may be adjusted.
Can't point this wrong.
It's thirty-seven point five percent. In our original request, uh, that we proposed last Tuesday night, oh, how a week can change everything, was thirty-eight point six-six percent. So a, a percent change in the, in the, in our staff informer.
So what, what is that funding? Is that for this?
That would be for the fiscal twenty-four.
No, but what, where did the difference between the thirty-eight point six-six and the thirty-nine?
That's next year.
Because of the state mess-up.
So it is, so we've, we've all right, so we're, we're going to charge the, that deficit to the county in effect?
Yeah, our problems could go away.
Proposed. We haven't decided yet. That's part of our discussion.
And it's a lot part of the, the superintendent proposed budget. Yeah.
Well, shouldn't that be footnoted that that's the money that we're not getting from the state or? But, but, but we don't even really know what that is because we don't have this capital or whatever, whatever you call it. So it may even be premature.
Yeah.
All right, I'm just, okay. And interesting, the cost to compete would give us.
How about that?
The same amount. And I didn't know that answer before I asked the question. I thought that might be the answer for you. All right, I'm, I'm trying to pick my next question wisely. Well, can I ask another, can two?
Are we going to do it around and around?
Yeah, I was going to say, my little questions are.
Catherine, too.
Yeah.
Yes.
All right, I'll, I'll hold the rest of mine, I've got a few more.
Okay. Catherine, did you have any questions you'd like to ask?
Sure, I have like one or two really quick ones.
Sure.
Again, they kind of stem from like a lack of understanding on my part. Um, so I'm just curious, you brought up earlier a revenue sharing agreement. I wasn't exactly sure what that was, what that looked like.
Great question. It's literally a deal, um, that the county government, which is responsible for a portion of our funding and the school system make a contract or an agreement that tax revenue is split based on a certain percentage. The agreement that they have in Prince William County is that forty-seven percent of the money that they collect in taxes goes, excuse me, fifty-seven percent goes to the schools. And, um, we don't have an agreement like that in place in Stafford County. There's pros and cons, in fairness to everybody, there's pros and cons, and approximately forty-seven percent of our tax revenue goes to schools in Stafford County. So it's a pretty big difference. Some people like a revenue sharing agreement because it's cut and dry, there's no arguing, there's no dispute.
There was stability.
It's a lot of stability, it's very predictable. But it also doesn't insulate anybody when there's an emergency. And so, um, if the, if the county board supervisors in Prince William County said, we're going to cut taxes in half, well, that also means that the revenue for the schools would be cut in half, too.
If there's a bad financial year, um, and the tax dollars are down, that can have a negative effect as well.
Well, so the schools are sharing the pain.
Yeah, yeah, but, but.
But the schools are going to share the pain anyway.
But when they, when people have done studies and looked at it, they find that the revenue sharing agreement usually results in the schools getting more money.
Yeah.
Okay.
You should put.
Yeah, that, that leads me a little bit into my next question. So I was curious whether that was brought up as just a comparison between Prince William and Stafford, or is that actually supposed to be like a part of the proposal, something we adopt?
That is definitely for the board's consideration. It, it is not part of our proposal right now, um, but it, it does illuminate that there is a financial difference. And it is a comparison because Prince William is our closest competitor. And it's hard to think of public schools competing against one each, one another and anything other than sports. But the reality is, is that we are competing, um, for teachers, we're competing for, uh, for staff, we're competing for resources. And, um, right now, the financial difference is, is radical enough that it does make a difference in, in that competition and that difference could be made up, and this is a potential solution for that.
Interesting. So then I just had one other really quick one, and I think Ms. Halsted actually already brought it up, but I kind of shared your concern for revenue. So I saw in the presentation you brought up the sales tax, um, as a potential avenue that we could explore, but I was curious if you had, if you had any other suggestions or thoughts on that?
So we're fully tax-funded, uh, with the exception of very small grants that, that we get for specific projects. We're, we're a fully tax-funded entity. At the state level, our taxes typically come from a portion of the sales tax that gets spent in Stafford County and also from income tax. There's a small portion of lottery revenues that are also a part of the funds that we receive, uh, from the state government. The state government, uh, gives us funds based on a, on a formula. So there's no negotiation, there's no, um, adjustment per se beyond the formula, which makes the disaster we've been talking about so, that much so frustrating because this should have been something that was very mathematical and not something that had a, had a human element in it. So that's a, that's a pain point that, that is giving us a bunch of frustration. But on the county side, which makes up, uh, you know, the other portion, thirty-seven point five percent of our budget, it is discretionary. There are some requirements that the county has to make in terms of funding our, our school system, but beyond those very minimal requirements, it is, it is a choice how much more the county gives to its school systems based on what it perceives, are, are the, the needs to keep it operational financially.
Okay, thank you, Sam, that was it.
Great questions.
Some jurisdictions in the Commonwealth actually have a one percent sales tax added to their local, that that has to be done by state legislature, state legislation, so that we could propose to our legislatures that we get permission to do that. But I think those funds are restricted to capital needs, capital needs.
But, but to your question, though, Catherine, I mean, you had asked about this, um, different types of taxes and whatnot, the, the primary means that, uh, that Stafford County uses as tax revenue are typically real estate tax and personal property tax, which is like your car tax.
Okay, so for, um, I sent a, a bunch of questions to you, so I still have those as my questions. But the other thing that I was curious, for the things that you went over with us on the high priorities but not included, are all of these included in the five-year outlook? Cause I haven't had a chance to.
They are. We've added them to the immediate next fiscal year because they are high priorities and, and what you'll start to see, and I'll give you.
FY twenty-five?
Yes, and I'll give you a good example of this, um, in your five-year summary sheet. Differentiated compensation is, is near the top of the list in discretionary expenses, which is on the right side of your page. And you'll, you'll see that that is a big chunk of change investment in one year, but then, um, it, it substantially trails off in future years after that because, um, we would likely find other areas that we would need to target and that we would focus on, but it would not necessarily have to be as comprehensive as what we would approach. One thing that the board asked us to look at, um, actually, Dr. Warner specifically asked us to look at, is how we might look at geography as an influencing factor tied to, um, hard-to-staff areas and hard-to-staff schools and hard-to-staff communities. We absolutely think we need to look at that. We would advise that the board consider looking at certain things by position first and seeing how effective that is and then look at other investments that they might make. And so we've budgeted for that in outline years to explore other ways to find that like perfect mix of how you might target some of those hard-to-staff components. Additional investments to the paraprofessional scale, that, that's in there, called out by name. Full implementation of staffing standards is, is tracked in your non-discretionary side, as is pay-go major maintenance. The differentiated school-based account, uh, of allocations is in two places. One is in the non-discretionary side, which is the base allocation, and then again on the discretionary side, which is, um, how you might differentiate that to better meet individual needs of schools.
Okay.
It's a great question.
And then, and then one of the other things that you had talked about was, um, benefits? Are, how, what kinds of benefits or how are you planning on changing benefits? And is that like, uh, I've seen in the five-year how in different places you're going to see different kinds of benefits show up?
So there, there's a couple of changes that have happened at the state level that are influencing some of our thinking at the local level. One of the more significant changes has to do with short-term disability versus sick leave and how a VRS Plan One employee is treated versus a VRS Plan Two or Plan Three employee. We have actually one of the best healthcare, um, plans, period. We, we are still watching the negotiations between Anthem and Mary Washington very closely because we do have a great situation and we'd love to preserve that. Dollar for dollar, we match up very well against other localities in our region and is actually a huge benefit for employees that are taking a look at total compensation. But we also know that there are some other things that our employees have asked us to take a hard look at. And so we've enumerated them, um, here, and I'll just run down a quick list for you of things to, that are, that are worth some consideration and further look. How, how we treat maternity and paternity leave. Presently, right now, we don't have any portion of this that is paid beyond, um, the leave that, that someone has accrued. This is a little bit of an outdated practice in terms of, uh, of organizations and businesses. And certainly, uh, in, in our business, this is something that would be a huge attraction for a lot of folks in, in terms of a benefits package. Looking at, at wellness, uh, in particular partnerships with organizations like a YMCA or, uh, other organizations that might provide gym memberships or something along those lines to encourage, uh, healthy living and.
Or like the COMHAP.
Yeah, uh, yeah, absolutely. Those, those types of, of partnerships and, and connections, they do have an influence, particularly in our younger workforce. And those are things that actually attract them to, uh, our organization and help retain them. So those are, those are investments that are, are definitely worth us taking a look. Something that our employees have asked for, for, for quite some time, and there may be some advantages to this, is being paid twice a month versus once a month. That's not free.
I'd ask for that.
That's not a, that's not an easy ask, that does, that does require a, a significant change to personnel and payroll.
And Spotsy proposed it for this year.
Yep, so, um, that is a, that is something that we know we need to consider and we need to look at. So it's definitely on the list.
I'll add to that quickly, I think with our workforce shifting on the younger side, I think that's something that they look for compared to, maybe our more experienced workforce isn't something that they look at differently.
Yep, yeah. They're not living quite so much paycheck to paycheck as the younger folks.
The, the concept of leave is also another big, uh, big issue for us to, to look at. There's been a number of requests that we've entertained, uh, from staff to look at possibly blending our leave between sick days and, uh, personal days. There's, there are some issues with how sick days can be used and transferred between school divisions, the cost of the leave and the leave liability versus personal and sick days. At any rate, it is absolutely an employee request and something that we should do due diligence, um, to look at and, and give, uh, a lot of focus and attention to. How we might better facilitate before and after-school care for, um, our, uh, our working parents who are, who are a part of our workforce. This is really, really hard to do without adequate space in our schools and how our, our schools could be used in that capacity. So this is something that we landed in, in some of the later years of our, of our five-year budget, but absolutely it needs to be discussed, absolutely it needs to be on the table and part of the conversation. So, you know, it's not just salary and compensation directly, but it's also what kind of work environment we want to have for our employees and make sure that they feel supported in lots of different ways. And as, as Mr. Fulmer pointed out, there are some generational differences and preferences for benefits and how we find that, that mix of, of, uh, benefits that is both attracting to, um, our candidate pool but also helps to retain our folks that are really invested in, in those, those pieces of our benefits package. So maybe taking a whole, more holistic approach.
Okay. Maya, Ms. Guy, did you want to ask your question? She sent it to me.
Sure, I thought you were going to read it, that's no problem, I'm right.
Okay.
It was just a, just wondering if our educators now could use our gym facilities as opposed to them needing a gym membership?
If there's a gym in the building.
And.
Or available.
And, and it's available and, you know, it's, it's, it's not an easy yes or no as much as it is, uh, maybe an access question and a consistency access question and also maybe even potentially a liability and workman's comp issue as well. So the answer is maybe and, uh, it depends. But it also may be very site-by-site based opportunities that are available as well.
Thank you, Ms. Guy. We're going to take a five-minute restroom break and then we'll come, or, yeah, five, ten-minute restroom break and come back to it. And we'll start with you again?
I want to take a break.
I gotta pee.
Oh. All right, it's all best.
With Ms. Halsted.
Yay! I, you know, I only have a few and, and you may actually tell me, uh, Dr. John, I think we're due up for a one-on-one this party. You may say save it for then, which I'm fine with. I wanted to talk again about the, um, money streams and additional funding. There is literally, there's, then there's no way to cross over or match funds from different pots of money, right? Like, we couldn't move something from one to another to make, to fill a hole other than what we currently have with the reserve and all that. Is that, so, I mean, I know operating budget is operating budget and we're going to hold off on this to add that, but what about cross-funding? No. I feel like there's a no.
Yeah, the, the, and, and again, the, the revenue streams might come from very specific places. I might need to dig in and get a little bit more detail from you as to what you mean before I give you a, a firm answer one way or another.
Okay, so, so then I'll.
But as an example, like, we know we couldn't use funds that were appropriated for a capital project and say, oh, gosh, our operating budget's way more important, let's move these capital funds over. Unfortunately, no, we could not.
All right, so that's, that's unfortunate, but that is part of what I'm asking.
Yes.
The other thing is, you said something earlier about a legislative resolution to kind of fix this. And for me, some of that means having Richmond require our external partner agencies that also have larger funding pots available to them that we don't have, like the Health Department and Mental Health Services, like transportation and whatnot. So, does that then become, is that, that's a legislative avenue? Or is that a solution we could potentially?
Well, one of the bad pieces of getting this news right now is that we're three-quarters of the way through the year and, and we're right at the beginning of the planning of the next fiscal year. But the good side of this is that the, the General Assembly is in session. So, um, the governor wouldn't have to call a special session to make an adjustment. They could just make it as part of their budget arrangement right now. We're in the second year of a state biennial budget. So the budget bills that are adopted are amendments to the existing budget, that's a two-year budget. This could be an amendment to the two-year budget, but to your point, yes, they would have to find a way or a mechanism to create the revenue to close that gap, to solve that problem. If they did this in part, if they did this in full or not at all, they would have to kind of articulate how they, how that revenue would come and what it would be appropriated for and for this specific purpose.
But they have that capability.
They absolutely have that capability.
All right, so that's interesting. Um, and then the last question I had, or actually I had two more, I'm sorry. One is about our insurance. How about it has our insurance been, we're, we're self-funded, right? What's that, what's that, we're, we're self-funded insurance?
Self-insured.
So, thank you. So, so how much have we been impacted fiscally in terms of, of our insurance, um, costs on our one-to-one? And have we impacted our teachers as a result of that? Or have we taken the full hit?
Actually, we've, we've been absorbing a lot of the cost escalation. There's a small cost escalation articulated. There's a small cost escalation articulated in our proposal for fiscal '24. Chris could probably tell you a little bit more about specific dollars over the years, but we have a very affordable health insurance package relative to other school systems, specifically other school systems in this area and Northern Virginia. We do pretty well.
So, it's not atypical for health insurance to see increases upwards of 15% to 20% a year. We've been very fortunate over the last five years roughly, I go back even seven, of our increases have not been that high. They've been in the single digits, if like, sometimes less than 5%. So we've been very, very fortunate. We just, our plan is structured, like, our plan is structured to encourage people to go to an urgent care, not to an emergency room. And emergency rooms are more costly. I think our staff do a pretty good job of getting the word out there. You know, we're trying to promote more online medical, you know...
And we have a young staff, too.
Yeah.
Yeah, and as the staff shift. So, we spend, it's about $32 million a year on health insurance from a solely funded, self-funded. Now, some of that comes in from the employee. Maybe five or six million of that is funded by the employee. So this year, originally seeing about an increase of about $750,000. We actually haven't had an annual meeting with Anthem yet. We have some calls with them this week. A few things with that being one of them, but they don't really have updated numbers for us yet. We usually are mid-February before we actually start to get those finalized numbers. So we have to do some estimating based on some historical trends. And so we're expecting some increase there. One, because we, as we continue to grow and we add more employees, we're gonna see that grow. Now those employees help offset that when they start to contribute to the premium. But this budget does include a 5% increase in employee premiums, which is pretty minor and we haven't done an increase in five or seven years. In fact, we've kind of lowered them a few years back and we did employ health insurance holidays because we had adequate reserves. Luckily, we do have pretty good reserves in our health insurance fund, health benefits fund, which has allowed me to budget, I'll say aggressively, to where we don't have to try to budget to cover the unknowns of health insurance world. So, if we have $7, $8 million in reserve in our health benefits fund, it allows us to budget a little bit closer there because if we do go over, I know we have a healthy reserve to cover.
Okay. And then my last question is, this just came when we were talking earlier for the long-term perspective and looking. One of the vice principals and I were chatting about school models and things that might benefit us later on down the road, looking at them. And one of them would be moving to a K through two model and then like a 3.5 or whatever. And we talked about it in terms of closing learning gaps and doing all that stuff, but also minimizing the impact on our scarce resources we have traveling down. Is there any, do we know, and I don't expect you to have the answer right now. I mean, do we save any money in the long-term in terms of building perspective and personnel and sort of minimizing? Because theoretically, she's more versed in this than me, the idea would be we get these kids earlier on at that K through two level where a lot of the behavioral and the learning things are taking place, where we focus our special needs resources and maybe we don't have such a burden. So, is that something we could look to? Is that...
I probably wouldn't recommend it at this time and I'll tell you why. With every school model, there are pros and cons. And I think that there are some real inherent advantages to an early school model and a late school model. There's a little bit of research around this, too, that the number of transitions that the kids experience going from different schools tends to erode some of the benefits. From a cost perspective, it would actually cost us a little bit more because you don't have necessarily a nice, neat feeder pattern system that could accommodate for that. And you've constructed your schools in a little bit of a way that has had the K through five model as the design concept, as the focal point of the school. The K two schools that are successful do have bathrooms in more of their classrooms. They are structured a little bit different even from a physical space standpoint. But those schools are really successful because they have a lot of intentionality behind them. So I would say it's worth exploration, but I'm not sure that the juice is worth the squeeze in terms of like a wholesale switch without some really obvious places to start or to look at. I think you probably have a couple other models that are worth looking at, like a year-round school model that may be a better place to start.
When you were talking about...
In terms of, in terms of thinking through that. But I don't think that the cost would be so dramatic to make a switch, but it would be added cost, it wouldn't be a reduction in cost to make that kind of change.
And believe me, I wasn't talking like in the next few years. I mean, clearly after our schools were built. But we were also talking just in terms of size, impact. Would it help us with some of the overcrowding in the schools because you don't have it? But then the other issue, of course, came the impact of the difference in age and maturity between the kindergartners and the fifth graders and them being in the same space. But anyway, I just, that helps me. And I'll probably mention it again a year from now. I will say it again until then.
Yeah, they say too, you know, smaller elementary schools.
Yeah.
Smaller middle schools, bigger high schools.
There is a couple places in New, well, my cousin is a principal at a K through two and I didn't think of it until she said it. But from my perspective, of course, we're talking about this budget now and I'm thinking, well...
And Fredericksburg has upper and lower elementary, too.
Oh, they do, okay, yeah. So I was just wondering, I mean, and again, my thought is minimizing the impact on special needs resources and whatnot at those key ages. But, anyway, all right, cool. Thank you.
Dr. Warner?
I had the risk of asking for an extra in this year's budget, but...
Oh, Lord.
I was thinking in terms of the extra resources for schools and the different compensation plan for different, I was wondering if we could target on Title I schools first and then expand it further on. And the only reason I say something is because I do remember during some of the PTO meetings, some of our elementary schools were just differently resourced because of parent capabilities and PTOs. And I thought maybe the Title I schools would be a place to start for that and I didn't know what the cost would be. But I also realize this is a...
So our title, our title program is exclusive to elementary school. And there's a bunch of those positions that are tied to secondary programs like mathematics. All of those are gonna be secondary positions. You know, the SED split is pretty evenly distributed, except a little bit more disproportionate towards middle school. Let us think through that, come up with a suggestion because you may not qualify for a title program because we haven't designated you a title program, but you may have characteristics that are similar to a title program that may make you a good fit for a differentiated approach. So I think that's a model worth looking at.
Can I ask a follow-up?
This is a follow-up. I'd like to know, not tonight, but sometime, you know, buy a memo or something, where our Title I funds are being spent. I know we allocate a certain amount per school and a lot of it is discretionary at the school, but, you know, how much goes to the schools and where they're spending it? Because almost half of our elementary schools are title schools now. So that means half are already getting extra money. Then you've got the half that aren't getting it. So what are they doing with it? And are they doing with it something that they could perhaps do what you're suggesting? You know, if it's enough, you know, if it's available.
Because I've heard that even like, along with...
I've never seen where we use it.
I think I heard one of the schools was using part of their title to get a full-time social worker versus...
Hartwood had a full-time social worker. Fowmuth at one point was doing a math specialist or reading specialist. They often are doing some...
I don't know how they're using it, but it would be helpful.
It's almost exclusively personnel.
To see that and then to see, you know, the resources that half the schools get, the other half don't. And I get it, you know, that they have a need for those funds. But then again, I've also seen it where we've designated like four schools and now we've designated, how many do we have? Is it seven or eight or... How many title schools do we have now?
It's almost half.
Yeah, it's like half of them are. So it's, what do you do? Draw a line down the middle, you're eligible, you're not. And then you get these percentages, title schools, category ones, that have a higher percentage of students eligible for free and reduced lunches under the federal government. So we get extra money from the state, right? Is that state funds?
Actually, it's federal funds, but they're flow-through through the state.
Well, but it comes from the state that we can allocate to schools that we, as a school system, identify, you know, as eligible. So it's really up to us and I've seen it change over the years from a small number to a large number to a medium number. I don't know the last time it's really come to us for a decision.
Do we have a schedule for evaluating, determining which of our schools fall into those categories?
It was annually. When does that come to us again?
You'll see it as part of your non-discretionary and title and federal programs budget at the February 14th work session.
Well, if we could get the information by the current year, to me, that would be helpful. And also their percentages of students to see where that... We literally draw a line somewhere among the 16 schools.
I noticed in the, going forward in the, I guess it's FY '25 budget, there's like 1.24 million for security enhancements, but there's nothing listed in the FY '24 budget. Is it because we increased, we made changes in FY '23 that we're kind of skipping '24?
So you've got, yeah, you've got actually a fairly substantial security enhancement as a change in your staffing standards. By adding elementary personnel who have a security component as part of their job description, combining the crossing guard and cafeteria monitor position to a full-time job. Some of their responsibilities will include surveying the building, checking exterior doors, things of that nature that have a security component. Long overdue investment in elementary school security because right now, with the exception of a couple of schools that have law enforcement personnel that have been assigned to some of our frontier schools, it really is not a whole lot in terms of personnel support for security. This would be looking at maybe a little bit more material.
Portable units and stuff that we're putting in, is that somehow covered? Because I know that there's additional security enhancements that you have to go there.
Yeah, and we have some of that already programmed in as part of our kind of camera approach and some of our surveillance approach. It's already in play.
Right now, we can only board up, someone go there and look really mean all day long. That's our security.
But the additional personnel will help tremendously. And that's really a game changer for that scenario is the additional personnel. That really is a difference maker for us. In terms of looking ahead and what other security enhancements that we could do, there's an awful lot that we should be looking at and that we should be considering in terms of staying on the cutting edge of technology and components that might interfere with our daily operations. There are a lot of bad actors in this world who have ill intentions for things that could happen on a campus and we do need to think ahead. And so we've got some things programmed for the board to consider down the road. But it is expensive, too.
It is, and I was just surprised there was nothing in like '24 and then there was in '25 and going forward, there doesn't. I realize these are just suggestions, these are not like actual numbers. But I was just surprised there was nothing in '24, especially given our, the addition of the portable units that we're putting in.
And so it's there, it's just not in the place tagged with security. And so for, it's actually really in two places. You have some components for our cybersecurity portfolio and technology and then the additional staffing at the elementary level.
Thank you.
Dr. Chase?
So, just, you know, going on to this unexpected expenditure or unexpected need for money for this year. Did we ever get, is there any cost to us for repairing that wall in Fleet Services?
The insurance claims.
So we don't think it's gonna cost us anything? Okay, and this is maybe kind of piggybacking off of Alyssa's question. You know, do we still have a whole lot of buses that we've ordered? And can we undo some of those, given that they haven't delivered them in any kind of time?
But we haven't paid them for them either.
Right, right, so, okay, I'm just curious. And then, you know, I am still just really having an enormous amount of heartburn over math teachers. And it's very hard for me to wrap around, you know, spending 1.3 million for stipends that have nothing to do with academics when I don't have enough math teachers. And so I'm really wondering if there's anything, is there any way where to find funds to try to fix this? Because every student is required to take math. And when we are...
What does improvement look like for math?
It would be dramatically changed if we had additional incentives to support some of our high-needs areas. This is not a high-needs area for Stafford County. This is a high-needs area for every single person who's looking for a math teacher, which is every school system. So, this is a real struggle for everybody. In terms of trade-offs, it's certainly the board's pleasure as to what you want to trade off. I would be cautious about anything that looked like a reduction. And the reason that I'm cautious of it is we're already kind of in a hole where you would, there's things that happen in a school that you'd want to continue to have happen. And if you dig too much further into that, I'm not sure that some of those things that are, that make a positive learning experience at the school, I'm not sure that the trade-off is 100% worth it because some of this is a bit of a gamble. There's no guarantee that differentiated compensation will 100% lock in every single math teacher because we're still $30,000 off the mark against Prince William. But will it make inroads and potentially make it a little bit easier for someone who's contemplating a move from Spotsylvania to Stafford or Prince William? Absolutely, it will help with that. I just would be, I would be weary about a reduction so much as choosing strategically what you would want to add. Because I think we did our due diligence to reduce the base budget. We reduced it by over a million dollars last year, by over a million dollars this year. I don't think that there's much more that you could reduce without interrupting services in a meaningful way. And if you did want to reduce services, you'd have to be pretty selective and surgical about which services you were committing to saying, "Okay, that's it, we're no longer going to provide social studies support." Or something, I'm making that up. But I would be cautious about that. But I hear what you're saying, it's not lost on me in terms of the choice seems very simple.
It has a huge impact on our students if they have a year without a math teacher.
Absolutely.
Math is, builds on, you know, it's a cumulative kind of skill and it is huge.
So, Dr. Chase, if I'm understanding you correctly, what you would like to see is like where he has in the differentiated compensation for us to move forward with the proposed, this is just my summary, proposed differential of the $5,000, which would be a cost of $925,000. Is a thought that you have?
I mean, and I have to say, I feel the same way about special ed. I mean, I'm not just, you know, I'm sort of like, things that we are supposed to be providing for our students that are not extras, that are not elective.
Well, I think that's gonna come down when we get our final budget to adopt, where we will have to make some choices.
I like this part.
It's a fun song.
I thought it was all gonna be fun. Anyway, I'm just asking where, how, is there any way to, you know, what would the trade-offs be?
Flush them in, something else, right.
Because with the, you know, with the January surprise, we are...
That much more strained, absolutely.
Well, it sounds like they need math people, too.
Yes, they do. And if we had math teachers, maybe this wouldn't have happened, yeah.
So to help with some, guiding some of the thinking, the things that we prioritized and I put into the superintendent's proposed budget are just that. I prioritize the things that I... I prioritize the things that I thought were a must have, categorized them in really three areas. The first area were adjustments to the base budget that we thought we could make. There were some strains with that. Nondiscretionary, nondiscretionary by its very nature is just that, it's nondiscretionary. This is the cost of doing business and keeping the lights on. And then discretionary expenditures and amongst our discretionary expenditures, you know, you really are looking at compensation one way or another. And it's maybe choosing which compensation strategy is the higher priority of the two. And I think that that's a point that in times of fiscal strain, you absolutely have to have that dialogue. And in terms of this discussion of our priorities, I have rank ordered my priorities for the board in terms of its consideration of other things that didn't get added. And to your point, my number one is just what you're suggesting. Because I think it puts us in a competitive advantage if we were to have.
I will just say, when I knock on doors, people who are older and don't have children in the schools, the message I get over and over again is y'all need to be focusing on reading, writing, and math. And what they are not asking me to focus on and what they will often point out to me is wait, turf fields, weight rooms, what do you spend all that money on that for? And how do I go say to them, oh, yeah, and we have 15 math teachers, we don't have math, you know, however many students don't have math teacher. It's a problem. So anyway, I will.
Ms. Guy, do you have some second round of questions? Do you have one?
Yeah, I think so. I think this might be the time to ask it, I'm not sure. But the chair and I spoke earlier today, so maybe you can guide me, this is the right time, about the emails that we've been receiving from the social workers or the counselors, excuse me. And just wondering when we can speak about that or when we can address that, if anything at all, or, I don't know, we gotta do something, right?
Absolutely. Yeah, social workers have definitely created advocacy, and they should. That's an incredibly difficult position. It's hardworking, overworked, has been overworked for quite some time. And then a pandemic happened, and add an exponent to their workload, for sure. Very difficult job. It was your number three legislative priority to change the SOQs to improve the ratio of social workers in the state. And you definitely took a position to do that because it's so important. No state legislator took that on and carried that as a bill despite Stafford's advocacy, and that was your number three advocated position. In your staffing standards, you have adopted a radical and positive change for social workers to a ratio of one to 1,000. That change would take place in fiscal '25 per your adopted staffing standards. So to make a change would, it's a multimillion dollar change. So that is, if you were going to add and make a change to your staffing standards, you'd probably have to take something out of your staffing standards to do that. We absolutely believe and support our social workers, but recognize that we can't do everything all at one time. So parsing them out and prioritizing this, that is what our approach was. We did make one fairly significant modification to differentiated staffing, excuse me, differentiated compensation for our social workers and our psychologists. They've been asking for quite some time to have an augmented scale. We have augmented their scale, and we also included them in differentiated compensation. Now, obviously, the differentiated compensation is what Dr. Chase just brought up, and that's, didn't make it into my proposed budget for financial reasons. But we definitely adjusted their scale to give them their own scale with psychologists this year, which is a baby step in the right direction. So I don't think that you've neglected social workers. I think you've been very deliberate in adding social workers, but they are primarily targeted in fiscal '25, not in fiscal '24.
Can we also address the information that's coming in from the social workers about having to do attendance now that they did not have to do before and also having to make court appearances? Because that's a significant amount of time that those two duties would consume.
So absolutely, we do have an attendance coordinator and an attended social worker who helps with attendance. But it is important that when we have students who have attendance challenges, that they are working with a social worker who knows them and not a central office employee as their primary contact. So having additional attendance duties is a challenge that is part of their workload. It is exacerbated by coming out of the pandemic and us having chronic absenteeism as a real issue. There are things that we can absolutely do to work on balance of workload with our social workers. But real relief is going to come in the form of additional positions. And it's going to come in the form of additional support financially. And it's the board's prerogative. But you are in the position right now where you can't do everything all at once. So you have to choose and choose which bite of the apple you want to take first because you do have a lot of bites left to go.
So is this attendance a new duty that was given to the social workers this year? And how much time does it take up for a social worker?
It does take up some time, but it's not an everyday occurrence. It's not their primary function. They have other social worker responsibilities. And we do have centralized attendance support to coordinate court appearances and to coordinate court support. But it is a part of their portfolio of responsibilities.
And it's new this year?
They have always had some role in attendance, but yes, they have a more active role in attendance because we don't want kids to fall through the cracks of not having a connection with the social worker that's working their case and not having someone who is centrally focused on their case making court appearances on their behalf, who's never met the child before versus somebody who's working in their.
So the social workers this year are having to go to court and do court appearances, whereas last year they did not.
They have had to do court appearances in the past as well.
We have had truancy, I mean, way, way back. Remember Ray Wallace Smith, his wife was one of our truancy persons.
And we still have people who work with truancy.
But those people would go to court, I'm talking like way back, before I was even on the school board.
Back before you had school social workers.
Back when I was in school.
Yeah, really, Ray Wallace Smith, his wife Janet, I used to meet her in court, and she'd be there for the truancy. But if you go to court, you could be stuck there all day. And what is that doing for their workload? Because their workload is not going to, you know, be reduced. How are they going to make up that time? And whose decision was it to add these extra responsibilities without, I'm assuming nothing was taken away? Maybe that's an invalid assumption, was something taken away when they assume these new responsibilities?
It is a challenge to balance their workload, no question about it. They have a lot on their plate, and they do need additional support. But you can't solve every problem all at once.
But something, we created it when we gave them these new responsibilities.
It's not just that, it's that amongst a lot of other things happening all at one time.
But somebody else must have been doing it before we gave it to the social workers.
We had additional support in an attendance office. We have some support in an attendance office, but not the same level of support in the attendance office that we once had.
Okay, so we could, and I'm just trying to understand this because, you know, it's a traditional issue when you keep adding duties without taking anything away. But it sounds like we took resources away to reduce, I'm sure it was an effort to economize, that we reduced the resources by giving the additional responsibilities to the social workers.
Yes.
So where was that decision made?
I was at the center of making that decision along with Student Services to try to economize a 1.1 million dollar budget gap that had been centralized.
And were the social workers involved in that?
Yes, and of course, they weren't favorable to making that change. That's not a mystery, absolutely not. But, you know, we do have to try to balance a lot of different people's plates. And if it's not on one person's plate, it does go to another person's plate.
Yeah, it sounds like you took a plate away. I'm not criticizing, I'm making an observation. But if you took a plate away so you could use it, you know, to make somebody else's bigger or whatever, I mean, we saved 1.1 million, but we put it on somebody else's back. So it's just, I'm just trying to make sure I understand what they're saying to us. And it sounds like it is true, in fact, that they have more duties now than they had before, and nothing's been taken away, which we've always had that from teachers.
Well, so that's my thing. I mean, it's an untenable position to be in, which is what I'm talking about with, honestly, like, you're literally now making us choose, and by you, I don't mean you or you. I just mean you're literally now making us choose between, I mean, and to Dr. Chase's point, it really is. We are looking now at, do we really need a basketball coach? You know, like, that's untenable. And we did it to the social workers last year to make, like, there should be a recourse. And not that we don't accept responsibility for stuff either, but there should be a recourse for the school system. This isn't a small slice of a community's responsibility. This is the slice of the community's responsibility, the school system is. So for me to put us in a position where we have to forfeit like a major incentive to hire math teachers because we're 3.7 million dollars short on a mistake we didn't make.
We were short that even before.
Well, before, I know, right. But I also feel like at this point, it's up to the seat to say, I better find that money. Like, I, it's.
You could look at any.
None numbing.
Any position in our school system, and there are jobs and duties that are going to be added and taken away based on the way we can do staffing.
Right.
And you're always going to have some segment of the staffing that is going to be unhappy about the fact that they've got an additional duty. But we have to get it done. It's not like we can.
Well, it's like us putting 504s on our teachers, you know, and moved it out of special ed because they grew, the cases grew so many.
Right. So, I mean, I don't know what percentage of their time attendance takes, but we have to put it somewhere. I do wonder, is there any compensation for the time they spend in court? Do we give them a stipend for that?
Part of their assignment.
It's part of their work.
But I also feel like it might be a legislative priority as well to really focus this next year on advocating for that mental health service.
It is already our legislative priority.
It is already your legislative priority.
It is already our legislative priority.
It's a member of the board.
We already recognized this. No, but I'm saying, like, I really believe, I mean, we're, and their emails were very detailed. There was a lot of thought that went into them about the fact that it is a priority for this governor and the missus.
Is it a priority for this governor?
I'm gonna, that's.
Zero dollars committed to it.
Oh, that's what I'm saying, there are, that's what I'm saying, like. But if you make that promise, then let's remember that promise.
Right now, we're talking about a local issue, and it sounds like, and again, this is not a criticism, it's an observation. But ultimately, it comes to the board to make these decisions on the budget. How much of, and you can give me this answer later or give us this answer, how much of that 1.1 million that was saved is attributed to the extra duties that were assigned to the social workers by taking the other resources away? And that's what I think we have to weigh. Because for years, particularly with COVID, we have been stressing on finding social workers, fulfilling the positions, to getting the job done, and we know how hard it is on them. You know, just the stress on the social workers, dealing with their clients and the students and the families and trying to make this all work. So I would like to know how much was saved by that, and is that something we want to look at? Do we want to put that back in so that they can go back to doing what they were doing before they had to do the extra attendance in the court? The court particularly concerns me because there is no control over that court docket. You can, your call for nine o'clock usually, you can get into court at three o'clock or even later. So they're sitting there not getting the work done.
They've always had to do court, though.
Yeah.
Well, but not, not always.
They have, absolutely.
But we used, I'm telling you, the school system has in the past. This is probably when Chris was doing school, had people, but I don't think he was ever probably truant, so. But they would send, they would have people that would go over to court, and they would be the assigned people, and they would have the records, and they would do the testimony.
And we still have a component of that that is absolutely still involved. I would suggest that what you've adopted as your staffing standard is the true solution. Because what you're talking about would be reverting back to a service delivery model that did not serve students very well. Because you had a component of our organization that was focused on court responsibilities, not on meeting the students' needs and connecting the student to resources. It was only focused on a court responsible component to that. Your staffing standard is the right approach because it gives additional support to your social workers by giving them additional staffing. I got to tell you, you will never meet a more dedicated group of folks than your school social workers. There are 29 of them in the school system right now. They have an extraordinarily low turnover rate. They're very well-led, they're very well-organized, they're also very stressed out and very frustrated and have a huge workload. That's not new. It is exacerbated under the circumstances of having chronic absenteeism through the roof right now, post-pandemic. That is not always the state of affairs for Stafford County. That will change over time, that will get better, that will change their work balance as well. But the way that we help them, the way that we solve this problem is to focus on a student-based program delivery, and we provide them the additional supports and the additional staff that they need to make a ratio that makes sense.
So what you're saying in the staffing standards that will support them just isn't coming in FY '24, it's coming in FY '25.
Maybe, maybe.
Or it's program.
It's proposed.
We cannot predict more than a year.
Well, and we had things last year that are not making it this year. So it's, you know, I mean, it's.
I want to deal with today and July 1st and when we go into the next year. And I'm really concerned that this is an area that we, I'm glad there's no turnover, but what I recall is we were told it was very hard to staff, hard to find. And by adding additional duties and not taking anything away, thinking in a couple of years, if we get where we want to be, where we plan to be, you'll be in better shape because there'll be more of you, that doesn't help them today or next year or until we get those resources. So it's just, I want to relook at this when we get to the approved budget.
And if not this, it's something else. So again, you're deferring your problem from one place to another. It's not making it go away. The only way to make it go away is to actually add the resources and give people the right level of support. The model that we had before didn't make the workload substantially, you know, amazing where everyone was like, gosh, I can't wait to be a school social worker, my workload is great.
But now it's worse.
But again, can I just, and I won't say much more on it, but at the end of the day, for me, it may or may not be a local issue, but I kind of disagree with that statement since it's a global shortage or a national shortage or whatever. It is much bigger than just this locality can fix on our own with that. When the state makes a mistake like this and takes away an expectation from us, that's so large and so imminent in the face of all of this. So for me, that's super frustrating. And I think to put the pressure solely on this school system and not where it belongs is a huge mistake, too.
Well, it has nothing to do with what we're talking about.
It does if we're looking at budget.
Well, but it didn't, it wasn't even in the picture when this came out and what they're talking about.
Correct, but what I'm saying is if you're asking me to look objectively moving forward at what the numbers are, then I can't look at this. And how am I supposed to pitch or look objectively at the local budget and the impact this has on the people of this community who, and maybe I'm getting it wrong. So John, you know, John Bennett, correct me because I'm not math nor am I accounting savvy. But the point is, is that as tax dollars go, I understand the differential levels of federal tax dollars going, state, whatever. But this state has made a promise to each community to fund particular things. So we went into a budget looking at stuff with the promise of that money. And that was not, maybe not a huge lift to some, but a huge lift overall. So to help our social workers moving forward, how do we do that if we keep the burden here and not readjust and relook at the state? The state has access to way more departments and way more funding sources than this local county does. That's just the way it is. They can do legislation for the Department of Health that says you've got money for A, B, C, or D service. You have to provide it to the school system and take it off their plate. That's well within their rights to do it. We can't do it. So what I'm saying is, is that this is a local issue, but in so many terms, we have to look. But in so many terms, we have to look at the little thing and recognize where our deficits are. But at the end of the day, we have to rely on the state, who is the bigger, better, quote-unquote, more outreach. This health department over here should absolutely be, and the community services board should absolutely be providing mental health services to our school kids to alleviate some of the burden and pressure on the system itself. And it doesn't because their burden is so heavy. But there's a way to handle that. And there's federal dollars allocated for it as well. So we're just not reaching deep enough into the other pocket. That's all I wanted to say.
Okay, Maya, did you have, Ms. Guy, did you have anything else?
Any more trouble you want to cause, Maya? No, just kidding.
That's the discussion I wanted to have.
I didn't hear, that was a good question. That's a good question.
Apparently, the answer was yes, we could have had discussion.
But I thought it was a good question.
All right, Ms. Healy?
All right, well, I'm just going to make a general question. I'm looking at the five-year summary and I'm seeing some fairly large differences between FY '24 and '25. And is there a way we can get some background on that? I mean, and I'll just, I don't know, an example? Okay, I'll pick two. Human resources, new teacher support, tuition assistance, parist to teachers. For FY '24, it's $348,675. But then starting in FY '25, it's only $51,000. So I'm not asking you for that answer, but there's, there's a lot of these that there's.
And I thought we were joining the five-year budget. I thought we were focused.
Yeah.
Well, this is talking, she's talking about the FY '24, why is it so high now? And then it's going to drop off. Why are we incurring it all now?
Well, hourly, it's like a half million dollars difference. I mean, just.
Everything builds on the base, so.
You're just adding next year to that $300,000.
It's just an add to the previous year, it's not a change. Actually, there's only, there's only one item on here that shows a reduction year-over-year. Actually, is it on there?
Bus replacement?
At the bottom, SE.
Yeah, bus replacement and growth.
Yeah. So one thing, it's the second to last line on discretionary items is to help the Stafford Education Foundation to get started in earnest beyond what its original capacity is, to help them with a staff position. And then to gradually reduce that over time. So you see reductions to the base over time after the initial year of implementation until you reduce that to zero.
To try to clarify, Ms. Healy, so when you're looking at the FY '25 column, that amount increased over the prior year?
Wow.
That's not your, your total amount for that, correct?
Yeah.
So it's already added, it's already, it's the increase to the increase to the year before.
Yes, that's right.
But still, there's a, there's a big, a big difference. Does that mean the ones that are high in '24, we're trying to hit it hard the first year?
And then you're maintaining it in the years, in the outlined years thereafter.
Because those are, and '24, those are the increases to our FY '23 base budget, which you see in '25 and beyond are now our inflationary adjustments to that total base budget from '24.
Well, the new positions for growth, I'm a little curious about that. If you look at the projected growth and then the amount for the new positions, it seems like it's going down some, particularly when you get to those out years.
It should be going up. You've got 3 million, 3.7, 3.6.
Well, but I mean, proportionate to the number of students. You've got the increase in students in the second line there. So an increase in students in FY '25 is about 10,000 per student. But then by the time you get to '28, I didn't do that math, whatever, 4.3 million divided by 608 is, you know, it's less than, you know, less than 10. So that's not, is it going to cost us less to have more students or?
No, you're still adding money.
Well, yeah, but I mean, less per student. I'm just, it looks, it just didn't look proportionately the same to me.
Yeah, so you kind of have to look at your new positions for growth and your staffing standards. And you can combine those together because what you see early on is more money dedicated to our staffing standards and that starts to trail off because we've met those staffing standards needs. So then you're truly getting into only your true growth over your staffing standard. So in those earlier years, we tried to break out some of those staffing standards that are baked in, including the growth. And we tried to back out some of the numbers for growth. But we don't know exactly what that looks like if we project a few years ahead. We know what our staffing standards that were adopted by the board are. So we're looking at that. And what is the cost to adopt those staffing standards in '24, '25, '26, '27, '28? And then kind of more of a formulaic approach of dollars per student and then backing that out on how many, based on the growth of the students, how many projected positions we're going to have. And then we subtract that out of our staffing standard. So looking at the staffing standards line and that new positions for growth together is probably a better figure of total positions added and the dollar impact for each year.
So a good example of that would be in fiscal '28, you don't actually have any staffing standards that are being adopted, but you do have some staffing standard maintenance to perform. And so that's just a quarter of a million dollars in staffing standard maintenance versus adding anything.
What does that mean?
So you may have growth that generated a vacancy in a specific area. So to maintain the standard, you have to add a position.
Got it, got it. So we're not saying that there's a certain amount of dollars per new student that we're adding in?
Correct.
How did you come up with these formulas then? I'm really curious. Because that's a question I'm often asked. If you're adding as many students, it's not necessarily a certain number of students, divided by the number of students into the teachers because a lot of them are going into classrooms that are already existing.
So you have an attachment and it helps you calculate. And it looks like this. And it says, Stafford County Public Schools New Student Growth Model for Staffing. And it looks like this, it's got a handful of boxes on it. And so what we did is we formulaically attached your class size ratios to special education, ESOL, and elementary, general ed, middle school, general ed, high school, general ed, additional support for counselors, 504, assistant principals, bus drivers, et cetera. And the proportion of a new student that each generates. And so you get all these fractals that you add together. And you can see the percentages that are driving that up. At the top, there's a little bit of like a key. Those are the percentages that are directly tied to that. And they drive a certain number of FTEs. So if you were to go on the low end of that collection, it would be for 351 students, it would be about 35.4 adults. Now, I'm going to tell you that this is missing some things. Like, for example, network technicians and technology staff. Because when you're adding people, you're adding devices, you're adding maintenance, you're adding a whole lot of other things. It doesn't have maintenance workers on here. It doesn't have, you know, some of the, I would say generically custodial, but it doesn't have nutrition workers. It doesn't have a whole host of things that would consume services. But we tried to come up with something that we knew we could attach to certain ratios and adjust it up to even out FTEs. You've got a metric there, total adjusted. We are going with the lesser of the two as a starting point and making tweaks and adjustments as we know have programmatic needs. But this is a model for us to help base some of those decisions off of.
So I'm just a little surprised that you need fewer FTEs for more students for high school versus elementary school. And it surprises me just because when I've delved into the SOQs, the per, the ratio is much lower for high school than for elementary school. And so I just wondered how we get there. I definitely see more special ed paras in there, but.
So, because this is based off of your adopted staffing standards, not the SOQs.
Gotcha, gotcha.
So, and the math is pretty simple for, and a good example of this would be like for middle school kids, you know, projecting a certain number of middle school kids. They take eight sections of classes, but yet teachers teach six out of eight sections. So the formula is pretty easy to come up with. But it also gives us an allocation sense of, you know, how many FTEs in which particular building we can project and why. So it's a helpful tool, but it is just that. It's a tool to help guide decision-making. It's not, it's not an answer or certainly not a panacea. Because what you can absolutely see for sure is that when you look at special education, how much it drastically changes by level, elementary, middle, and high in terms of the split between level one and level two services. So that's a, that's a huge factor. And ESOL is another one where that changes dramatically between elementary, middle, and high. But yet ironically, at the high school level, when you have a level one student, the high school level, it's pretty dramatic needs versus a level one student at the elementary level. So it's a, it's a guide, it's a tool, it's helpful for decision-making. But it's better than basing it on nothing, which quite candidly it was.
I mean, you have to have some formula for planning and then you adjust when reality hits, right?
Well, and look at some of the staffing requests that the board has entertained in the past. It was like, we really need another art teacher at such and such school. Sure, but yeah, I mean, I don't know if you do or if you don't. But having some basis for that decision-making, I think, helps.
I have one last question. This, the paraprofessional scale, where did the new approach come from? Fifty percent of the teacher's scale?
So a lot of school divisions use this as commonplace. The one closest to us is Prince William. The one next closest to us is Fairfax that uses this as kind of just their basis point.
And the tier one, two, and three, what are they?
We currently have three tiers of paraprofessional compensation right now. We have a general ed para, which is effectively a tier one para. Our level one special education paras are a tier two. And our tier three are title one paras and our level two special education paras. That's our current practice as well.
So are we on this now or is this a proposal?
Uh, no, we don't follow that map. That's an enhancement of about $1.5 million in additional paramoney. But the structure is one that we use in terms of the three tiers.
I hadn't seen that before. Thank you. Okay, Catherine?
I'm exhausted on my question.
Okay.
That was very lawyer-esque. I'm exhausted.
And to the rest of my questions, I already written an email, so I'm good.
Got them.
All right, anybody else have anything else?
That's a lot.
If you do, please send out to, Missy, yeah, please send to Missy to send out to the rest of us. And then also, if you could promise if anything comes in, if you could put it in the Friday memo, that would be great, too.
Can I just have a request from Missy or Dr. Taylor, whichever? Can we get a copy of that revenue sharing agreement that Prince William asked with, between the county and the schools? I think our, our.
I'm trying to try to.
Oh, yeah, that'd be good.
So funny, they've had that since 1988. And then they revised it in like 2004 to increase the percentage and.
I think that's about when we, when we had ours. I'd like to get a copy of the one we had with the county that was never implemented, but it was signed.
Might be tougher, so.
It was signed, it's, well, it's signed, it's in our record somewhere.
Was it signed? I didn't think y'all.
No, no, we signed it and they signed it. And then the election came in to play and then the new supervisors just canceled it out. It was actually signed, it was an MOU.
I have a 19-year-old.
A cost revenue sharing agreement.
Take a couple of cupcakes.
Interesting.
And there's no box.
And bring it, can you just bring it to the next fab?
So can you combine the cupcakes in one? Maybe.
So, okay, this meeting is adjourned, thank you.
Thank you.